Everybody being here for the pre-meeting. We'll go ahead and get started for our council meeting at 10:00. We will have a presentation. United Way President and CEO Kimberly Ray will be here to start the meeting. Approval of minutes, there were no changes. Any questions on those? All right, approval of monthly bills, July 20, 24 monthly bills, any, there were no changes, any questions? All right, setting public hearings, ordinance 244587, approved rezoning requests 1424-24 for property located at 23366 Bib Garrett Road, set public hearing for September 16th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. Dane, or Tommy, any changes on the? All right, any questions? Ordinance 244588, approved rezoning requests 142624 for property located at 211 West Molton Street, set public hearing for September 16th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. Any questions? On the previous one, Bib Garrett, they just want to have more flexibility, there's no, nothing we know of that's coming.
Directly in time, it was no plan to return in. The tank was good, the paper was fine, but we just wanted to rezone. So, we're going to rezone the park.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, public hearings, resolution 24095, approve abatement of unsafe conditions at 425 Vine Street Northwest, public hearing was tabled to August 19th, 2024.
Yeah, please, no changes on that. I haven't heard anything from the property owner, I haven't had any correspondence.
Okay. Any questions? All right, weed abatements, Josh, anything?
No change.
Okay, any questions? All right, resolutions, resolution 24171, approved budget amendment for the purchase of additional garbage carts from Auto Environmental Services. Any questions? All right, resolution 24172, authorize mayor to sign agreement with Mental Health Center of North Central Alabama for ARPA funding.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution 24173, authorize acceptance of funds for the Morgan County State delegation for signage at the Train Depot and Old State Bank.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution 24174, award bid number 24020 for Janitorial Services to J&amp;H Janitorial, being the lowest responsible bidder. I looked at the bid tab, too, I think the second lowest is about 80,000 more, but it was a lot lower than the highest bid. It was sort of close to the second.
Who was our, who was our previous, who's our current?
The verse five maintenance out of Birmingham.
So, did, were they one of the four who bid? Were they the, the third highest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would also add, we are terminating that contract a couple of months early, just because some management issues that we've talked through with them, so that is scheduled to expire in November. But after visiting with them, looking at the current situation, we did bid that a little early. They did still submit a bid, but they, they went off the low speed.
We only had one from, from Decatur, is that correct?
It was the highest.
It was, it was much higher. But the others are from Birmingham, is there an issue with us getting, communicating with them, or, well, not necessarily communicating, because we can communicate, but with them not being local, is there, and is that provide an issue for us as far as service? Are they just hiring locals and doing it like that?
They hire local people, and we also have a language in the bid that existing local workers that are with the current contractor, they would, if they need to hire staff, they would have first opportunity to keep them, if they're recommended to keep them.
Okay, so, but their managers are local as well, or are their managers out of Birmingham?
Some, I think it varies, I think they, they have some regional guys that oversee several contracts.
I guess my, my real concern was just that it, I think the bid was, the, the second highest bid was like 200, $203,000 or something like that, and there was just a significant difference between the lowest bid and, we've had situations before, and, and Jason is here, where we have done like mowing in our cemeteries, and somebody come in with an extremely low bid, and I couldn't, well, regardless of that, they couldn't do the work. And, and I'm concerned, that, that's a real concern for me, them being so much lower. I want the lowest bid, absolutely, but I want, but I want an effective bid.
I understand, and I did call references that they provided, and they, they got very good recommendations from, from different municipalities across the state, so I'm, I'm confident that they will, you know, do what's expected, and all we can do is, is do what we.
Okay. If, if you've checked them out, I, I feel better about it, but again, my real concern is that the, you know, none of the figures, none of the bids were actually even in the ballpark with each other. One was 400 and some thousand, one was 200 and some thousand, one was 300, the other was like, yeah, I mean, so, well, the, but, you know, they just weren't in close, so I, it's almost like they weren't looking at the same scope of work. I mean, that's what it kind of came across when I, when I was looking at it, so.
Anyway, if you're, if you've called and the references are, have said that they're okay, then, you know, we can, we can work with that, I guess.
All right, any other discussion or questions? All right, resolution 24175, award bid number 24023 to Hogan's Mechanical Services LLC for LED field lighting installation at Sportsplex, being the lowest responsible bidder.
No changes.
Okay, any questions? Resolution 24176, approve City of Decatur and Darty LLC agreement for public easement.
No changes.
Okay, any questions? Resolution 24177, approve Charter Communications Spectrum Sixth Avenue Lighting Project.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution 24178, approve acceptance of donation for a handicap swing to be placed at Rhodes Ferry Park.
No changes.
Okay, any questions? All right, we will get started at 10:00, thanks. All right, call the meeting to order. Daniel Boutwell will lead us in our invitation pledge.
Let's pray. Most kindly gracious heavenly Father, as we come together today to do the business of the city and conduct it, God, we ask you, Father, for your wisdom, we ask you, Father, that it would be conducted as pleasing to your side, we ask you, God, that you give wisdom to our leaders and our city, we ask you, God, to be with our country, and Lord, we ask you, God, today, be with the ones in our residence and our employees today, the ones that are sick, God, we ask you to be with Lieutenant Williams, his family, his daughter that's in Children's Hospital, we ask you, God, to touch them, and Lord, we ask you, God, that helpless God just liberalize for you, all these things we ask, Christ's holy name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Daniel. Roll call?
Flattner.
Here.
Max.
Here.
Jackson.
Here. Here. Is there anyone here from United Way? Didn't think so. All right, we'll move into our agenda. First, we have the approval of minutes. We'll take these together, if everybody's okay with that.
A.
Okay, we'll take A separate.
Can we?
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. We did have Mr. Faruki sign in on this.
Yeah, minutes specifically, 5 August. Where can we have chief?
Let's, Kim, just hold on right there for a second. This is for the, this is for A, July 29. Any discussion? Roll call?
Flattner.
Aye.
Max.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aye.
July 29th, 2024 is approved 5 to 0. Next, we'll take B and C together, motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike, Mr. Faruki.
Yes, sir, we asked about Chief's plan last time. It's been six months, we finally got this plan to read it, has everybody read it? Councilman, Mayor, have you read it?
I have not read the latest revision.
Okay, and your reason for that is because you were involved in hearings, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, but you played pickleball on Saturday.
That's none of your business, Mr.
That's what you told me, I asked you.
I'm giving you an answer.
Okay, well, maybe not being none of my business, but reading this plan probably is your business. Page two of the plan, original plan came out, only two of the original six politicized plans from May remain unchanged, so he's changed, there's been a lot of trepidation in the plan and what it ought to be, probably some lack of confidence in the plan. The word crisis is mentioned 19 times in the plan, and leadership is mentioned 17 times in the plan.
Do you have a question around the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, can you get to that?
My plan, or the plan, was not discussed, it has come out, now it can be discussed.
Sure.
Okay, and the plan.
Not when you signed in to talk and ask questions.
If we cannot give commentary, comments.
You can, that's what public comments are for.
No, but he will not be here, his staff will not be here.
I'm sorry, that has nothing to do with me, but.
It does, you're the one that set the agenda.
No, 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 no. It doesn't.
Then allow me to speak, please.
You, you can ask a question on what you signed in for, but I'm not.
I'm talking about the agenda items.
I'm not going to allow you to sign in for agenda items and then go on a totally different path from what you signed in on.
Okay, I was unable.
Do you have a question about the minutes?
Okay, that's how we're going to play?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's how every, it's.
No, it's not how everyone works.
When you sign in to speak on minutes, speak on the minutes, and if you have a question, we'll answer those.
Okay, the plan didn't come out until when?
Friday.
Okay, no, it came out earlier than Friday.
Whenever, but it was after these minutes you signed in to speak on were published, were approved.
Why wasn't the plan produced earlier?
I don't know, do you have a question on the minutes?
Okay. When will we be able to discuss the chief's plan outside of the comments?
I'm happy to discuss it with you, the time.
When is, we as a group, with the mayor, president.
If anybody wants to bring that up, at the end, we give time for council members to make comments, or the mayor, and.
Will we, will we be discussing that today?
Well.
Because I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get ahead of this problem, God.
It sounds like you want to discuss it with the mayor, and I believe.
No, I want to discuss it with you, Jacob.
Then, then do it in public.
And you, Mr. Jackson, and you, Kyle, and you, Mr. Pepper, we talked briefly earlier, and you.
All right. When we're done with this conversation, we do have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Roll call?
Flattner.
Aye.
Max.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 Those minutes are approved 4 to 1, so you can stay. Monthly bills, approved July 20, 24 monthly bills. Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike, any discussion? Mr. Faruki.
Okay. Chief's plan highlights communications in several city entities that have resources online. He talks about in his plan to use those resources. Now, we have a check from the Decatur Morgan County CVB for $124,702. We have Red Sage Communications, they were paid $14,225, and we have positive promotions that was paid 3841. I don't know what positive promotions are, could you tell me?
Kyle, do you happen to know what?
It's related to the Red Sage effort, there's additional costs we have, obviously more like Facebook posts and stuff.
Yeah, or it could be.
They require us to pay salary costs to pay that, but it's all related to that storytelling, marketing effort that.
Storytelling or propaganda, sir?
What? Are you asking me, or are you asking?
Okay, yes.
Storytelling.
Okay, a story is being told to the community about the chief's plan, because he's asking for additional resources to reassign some of these resources we just talked about, to fix the police department's communication effort.
Okay.
We've, you've read the plan, I know you haven't, but.
Is that, is there something about the plan and the monthly bills that I didn't hear you speak about?
How are you going to restructure those, those funds to make this thing happen?
I, I don't think right now we have any plans to restructure the funds you mentioned, the cost.
So, the chief's ability to make this thing communication wise happen will not be resourced.
Those are two separate issues, but he's not going to use Red Sage to, to answer your question, to do anything with.
So, this will be additional funding from his plan, in his plan?
That would be my assumption, yes, but I haven't seen any, anything that.
Before you go any further, Mr. Faruki, and I have been thinking about this for quite some time, since you brought that particular line item up, we pay them $14,225 per month. I would like to request that a representative from Red Sage come in and at least go over, and I know that they've done a presentation before, but, I mean, this is a monthly fee, and I'd like for them to come in and kind of share with us what we're getting, what's going on, and I'd like for somebody to reach out to them and see if they can come in and do a presentation.
They, they will, and I think maybe in budget, we're, this is probably the time to do that, so we can do that.
I would, I would love to have them, and again, even though it's in budget, if we got an update every month for what we've gotten for $14,225, I don't think it would be over the top, so.
No, we, we can do that.
Okay.
No.
Can I speak now?
Yeah, if it's, if you have another question on the, the bills, that's what we've, we're voting on here.
Yeah, we're paying $8295 to Aleah for what?
Our certification.
Certification.
Okay, and does that certification provide any resources to examine the chief's leadership?
I don't know.
We're also paying $1,576 to Alabama Peace Officer, what's that for?
I'm not sure.
Can anybody answer that? We're also paying $15,232 to the League of Municipalities, what do we get for that amount of money?
Are you familiar with the league at all? The League of Municipalities?
I'm asking, what do we get with it?
Yeah, you know what they are, is my question.
I, I believe they have a handbook, and I know that we're not following what directives should be in the handbook.
So, it's, every municipality, almost every is a member of the League of Municipalities, they provide things like training and resources for cities, and we're a member of it.
So, why $15,000, what do we get for that?
They can help on all kinds of different things.
Could they help with training for the legislative body of the City of Decatur to provide a resolution?
They do that, yeah.
They do it, or why?
We go to, can go to training.
Have we gone to training?
Yes.
Yes.
Who has gone to training?
I don't, can't speak for Mr. Jackson.
I have, over the years, I have, during this time.
Okay, does that training include any type of training of legislative abilities or skills?
It's more of a, what your role is and that type of thing, yes.
Okay, and how do you define your role in that regard to legislative responsibilities?
You and I have talked about that several times.
Well, I think the City of Decatur.
And I've said it right here.
Yeah.
Operates similar, in my opinion, like should, like a board of directors level with legislative powers in the, in the municipal government way.
Okay, because I would offer, we need some training in how to produce resolutions that will help and benefit the city versus allowing actions from directorates to come up here and not be action defined.
Okay, I think that we're good there, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Flattner.
Aye.
Max.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Flattner.
July 20, 24 monthly bills approved 5 to 0. Next is ordinance 244587, approved rezoning request 142424 for property located at 23366 Bib Garrett Road, set public hearing for September 16th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m.
Tommy, what's the planning department, how are y'all doing today?
Good.
That's great. The applicant is requesting to rezone 202 acres of land from AG2 to RD redevelopment. The property is located southwest of 23366 Bib Garrett, and it passed the planning commission July 23rd. At this time, the applicant has not turned in a site plan. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions? All right, next is ordinance 244588, approved rezoning request 142624 for property located at 211 West Molton Street, set public hearing for September 16th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m.
The applicant is requesting to rezone 0.35 acres of land from B1 Local Shopping to B2 General Business, the property located at 211 West Molton, and it passed the planning commission July 23rd.
All right, any questions? All right, public hearings, resolution 24095, approve abatement of unsafe conditions at 425 Vine Street Northwest, public hearing was tabled to August 19th, 2024.
Josh Sloan, Community Development, this one's been on safety building for quite a time now. We've exhausted all means necessary to date to assist and aid the property owner in getting this abated or sold in some way. We've received no feedback from him, especially the last month or so.
Okay.
We're just requesting move forward with demolition of the building.
I have spoken with Josh, and I spoke with Alan outside, I spoke with Mr. Robinson previously and today, and I know that we have extended time to allow him to get things together and try to make this happen. This is a historic building in our community, and even though we have gone for years in with this process, we've had the discussion, and I'm going to ask this council to table this thing one more time. And, Mr. Robinson, I think that you and I have had the conversation that if we're able to table this one more time, and I'm going to ask for a three-month period, I want more, I'm going to ask for more than, than we've done, again, the council may or may not go with this, but I do want to say that, the same things that I said with the chair with the outside, that at the end of the three-month period, if we can't do something, then I think that we might have exhausted all of our opportunities here, so I would have to vote for demolition at that particular point, but I am going to ask this council to extend this for three months, that it's secured, it's secured, correct?
It, it, well, yes, there have been some issues, but they have been secured since then.
Okay.
Its collapse is imminent.
Okay.
That is a concern.
It's, it's secured from an outer perspective, unless you get on top of it or something, but, so I don't think that it's a, it's a safety issue at this particular point, so I don't know that three months is going to make or break us, so I'm going to ask this council to extend this catalyst for three months, and then at that particular point, we will vote on it. Is that fair, Mr. Robinson, if I request that?
Mr. Robinson, how long have you owned the property?
Let's let Mr. Robinson come to the.
Yeah, how, how long have you owned the property?
Approximately 20 years.
20 years, okay, and Josh, the, the property was condemned in 2009, is that correct?
Yes.
So, nearly 15 years, so if you've owned the property for 20 years, it's been condemned 15 years of your ownership, why have you, what's the issue there?
The days might not be like I'm saying, but we have been there for quite a while.
Yeah, so the city's been dealing with this building since 1993, am I, is that correct? 1990, in that area, so the city's been dealing with this, this building since 1993 and its issues and things like that, and it's been condemned since 2009.
I believe Mr. Robinson's owned the property since 93, something like that.
So, so 21 years.
It was condemned in 2009.
Sorry, 31 years, sorry. So, 31 years, so in 2009, that's a, that's a good period of time since it's been condemned, so I, I can't support pushing it on any longer than the time you've already been given to do something with the building. To my understanding, the city has brought individuals to purchase the property from you in an attempt to alleviate some of the issues going on, or, and things in that category, so I, I think you've had a long enough time window to fix the issues that are going on with the property, or to bulldoze the building, so unfortunately, I, you said that there may or may not be a safety hazard, but if somebody gets inside that building and they, and they hurt themselves, you know, that, that's a liability on you yourself, so that's very concerning to me, so I think that it's time to go ahead and bulldoze the property. Do you have any plans, or if we were to extend this for three months, do you have any ideas of what you would like to do with said building?
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, sir.
This is definitely what you've been talking about, but we do have some concrete plans, but I just need more time.
Okay, can, can you?
I'd rather not, but I do have plans.
Do you plan to bulldoze the building?
No, 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 I, I would like to say to everybody, in all your ways, I'm not a team, and let him direct your path. If it comes to be, I can live with it, but I'm asking for more time.
Thanks, Mr. Robinson.
And let me just add, even much longer than Mr. Robinson has had this building, this building has historic value, and we do every, I think we extend every resource that we possibly can, and maybe we've gone over a bit, and let's just be real, but we extend every resource that we have with, in other situations to preserve historic buildings, and I don't think that three months is going to make or break anything, so I, again, I'm going to make a motion that we table this for three months, and at the end of three months, Mr. Robinson, if we haven't come to some sort of resolution about what we're going to do, or what we can do, I will make the, I'll be the one to make the motion to demolish it.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters, this is a motion to table for Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. McMasters, and this would be the October 21st council meeting.
It'll be November.
November.
I'm sorry.
18th.
November 18th, yeah.
I appreciate.
November what?
18th.
Okay. November 18th. All right, so motion to table this item till November 18th, move a motion to second, any discussion?
I would ask the council not to support this today, as, again, Mr. Robinson, I, I understand that you have had some time.
That's what the vote's for, that's what the vote's for.
I understand that you've had some time, so unfortunately, and I, I will be, I will not support a table today, and I'd ask the rest of the council not to support tabling this project, as I know that Mr. Jackson has stated that, you know, we need to use as many resources possible to try to contain the, the history of this, of this building, right, but Mr. Jackson's been on the council for a very long time, and so if it's been condemned since 2009, he's had plenty of opportunities between now and then to, to do something about it, so I think it's time to go ahead and push forward with bulldozing the building.
Okay, thank you, any other discussion? Roll call?
Flattner.
To table, aye.
Aye.
Flattner.
Aye, sorry.
Max.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Flattner.
No.
The motion to table is approved 4 to 1, we will revisit in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and ask.
All right, next are weed abatements, and we'll take these one at a time, but Mr. Faruki, did you want to just go ahead and make your comments? Weed, on weed abatements? I misunderstood you.
Let Josh talk.
Okay, I don't think there's anything, just.
No, no changes on these, we've, they were a public nuisance, they've already been addressed and cut, we're just requesting the council to assess.
Okay.
Last time we talked about weed abatement, Josh said he's had a plan, he's going to talk to you about it, Mayor, did that happen?
No, no, sir.
When is it going to happen?
I'm looking at Josh.
So, Josh is determining when you're going to ask him to provide the plan.
So, not sure which plan we're talking about, but, so, we have requested from the public, haven't got a lot of feedback or help from the media on anything other than Facebook about help with property owners who are elderly or financially and physically unable to maintain their properties throughout every year. We have at least a handful or more of those individuals, and it really pains us to send a contractor over there to cut it and assess $293 a cent on that property, and then ask them to pay it when they couldn't afford the $60 or $80 that it costs for a contractor if they paid them to come out and cut it. So, we're asking for help from the community with contractors, church groups, anybody willing and able to help, we're asking them to contact our office, we do have a vetting process, we're not just taking strangers off the street and then sending them over to a grandma's house to cut their yard because it might be an issue, so we are vetting some of these people, but we do ask for help from the community on helping those people out, and I think that might be what you were referring to.
So, have you, Josh, where you can use Tim Hall as well, our communications specialist, So have you, Josh, where you can use Tim Hall as well, our communications specialist, trying to get that word out?
We can, yeah. Yeah. So it's been out on Facebook, I've talked to Thane about it from the daily, but I've gotten crickets from anywhere else.
Okay, thank you.
I want to say thank you for that. That's, that's important, that's big, that's, that's community, so I say thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Josh. All right, anything else?
Yes. So that discussion, which was great, Josh, again, I appreciate it, that discussion with you did not happen until just now, correct?
To the best of my memory, yes.
This isn't a court of law, Mayor, so it's a simple yes or no?
I've given you an answer, Mr. Faruqi.
To the best of your knowledge, okay. Then, to the best of your knowledge, you remember when I made the suggestion, in addition to what Josh talked about, the possibility that the city look at having additional equipment available to the public to use for this exact same thing? Do you remember that?
I do.
Okay. Is there any recommendations that you would have to say that we can't or can't do that?
I would say that we can't do that.
Okay. Do I need to come up with a resolution myself that would make that happen, or can you and the council make that happen?
Council can.
But you can't do anything about that?
I would not recommend that.
What would you recommend?
I would recommend doing what Josh is talking about.
Okay, but you haven't seen the full opportunity to use additional resources for the city.
I'm through with you, man.
Excuse me?
I'm through.
I know you're through.
Okay, with you.
You're through with me?
In this conversation.
Well, I still have minutes available, Mayor, so I appreciate you being through with me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, Resolution 124, or sorry, 24165, motion by Mr. Pepper, second, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 You.
I said aye.
Okay. I was just making, I know your stance, and I'm not trying to.
I appreciate you.
All right, Resolution 24165 is approved five to zero. Resolution 24166, motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 24167 approved five to zero. Resolution 24168, motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution 24168 approved five to zero. Resolution 24169, motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution 24169 approved five to zero. Resolution 24170, motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution 24169 approved five to zero. Resolution 24170, motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution 24170 approved five to zero. Move to resolutions. Resolution 24172, approved budget amendment for the purchase of additional garbage carts from Auto Environmental Services.
That's 171.
Sorry, 24171.
Morning, Council. Daniel Bobb, Environmental Services. Yes, we need to order, right, 1,600 carts, 81,000, 457,32. I will let you know, we replace less than 4% of total carts a year, and so this is what this is representing. If we order them now instead of waiting until the next closing year, we'll save roughly 20,000.
Motion, second. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 24171 approved five to zero. Resolution 24172, authorize Mayor to sign agreement with Mental Health Center of North Central Alabama for ARPA funding.
Yes, this is just our ARPA funding agreement with the Mental Health Center of North Central Alabama.
Motion, second. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Ms. Perkins, did you want to speak on this one?
I want to speak, yes.
172.
You skipped the 171, by the way.
Yeah, you skipped, Justin.
Don't want to speak after her.
I'm sorry.
Is this?
It's on the last page, I didn't see it.
Is this about the, is this about the?
About the what?
Mental health that the mayor's supposed to be signing off on, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm up here because I don't feel that he's stable enough to sign off on anything dealing with mental, because he's inconsistent and competent and very incapable. He's a complete embarrassment. After sitting in on those hearings, that was, that was awful. And just a little feedback to you, Rochelle, you're taking every information.
You can't talk about the hearings.
Well, I mean, you, you said that you take every, all, you get all your information from her at the hearing, and you said you trust her 100%.
Time to, trying to talk about the hearings.
Well, I'm not, I just said that you, that's what you said at the hearing, that you get all your information from her and you trust her 100%. That's okay.
I'm not going to talk about the hearings.
Okay, well, let me.
But let's be clear, she's not saying anything specifically about hearing, she's giving a general, generality of what happened, and that she's not.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the hearing.
She observed, nothing specific.
And also, they brought up retaliation, like y'all trying to get Jackson for retaliation just because he asked a question. Retaliation is what Ja Renshaw did to.
Now she's talking about a specific hearing.
No, I'm not.
She's now, she brought up now.
Retaliation.
She's now talking about a specific hearing.
I'm up here.
Mr. Lattner, she's now talking about a specific hearing.
No, I'm not. It's a public hearing.
Can you let us know?
I'm talking about the word retaliation. That's what I'm talking about.
You brought up a name that regards a hearing.
And I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the mayor.
That, that needs to be addressed immediately.
I'm talking to the mayor and I'm talking about the word retaliation.
You brought up a specific name that regards a hearing within the city.
It was a public hearing.
It doesn't.
I'm not talking to you. I'm not talking to you.
I'm going to, Ms. Perkins, we just can't get into specifics.
Okay, I'm not, but like I said, retaliation, you need to look that word up, because it's not asking somebody a question. Retaliation is what a former police officer did to Steve Perkins supporters. That was retaliation. Taking a picture with a murderer in uniform, that's retaliation. Handcuffing me, taking Adam to jail, taking my cousin to jail, that's retaliation. Not asking a question. Now, with that being said, the only ones need a double demotion are you, Rochelle, and Todd. And the only person that needs a double promotion is Billy Jackson. Billy Jackson for mayor.
I've already shared, I've already shared with the council, President, it's not appropriate to discuss that.
How about you speak up? You speak up.
Come on, we've got to finish the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we do have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
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 170, 24173 approved five to zero. Justin, I'm sorry, I didn't see that, but if you want to, on the garbage cans. Oh, that's my bad, I'm sorry.
Good morning. The agenda item was about.
The garbage cans.
Amendment, a budget adjustment. I had, went and re-watched the city council meeting about the budget, and I had a question for you, Tab, about the, the budget. How long do you spend on the budget?
We just spent about two weeks, week and a half, on the first round, and I'm sure that there'll be a, a second round of coming through the budget.
Is, is that building it or presenting it to be approved?
So each department has a liaison in our, from our finance team that works with them on getting their budget kind of set, and then that comes back to our CFO.
Wait, huh, I'm asking you to repeat that item, I'm, I had a brain fart. You said who?
Each, each department has a member of our finance team that serves as a liaison to the department. They help them get their bu- budget skeleton, if you will, the bones of it established. Then that comes back to our CFO. And our CFO and I end up working with the departments, specifically department leaders, and going through the budget just to make sure that we've got the right things in there.
Does that involve the city council or not?
That, I end up presenting what's termed as the mayor's budget to the council for their consideration.
How long do you present that for, like?
CFO ends up presenting that budget to them and it's just whatever time it takes.
So is there like actual meeting or, because like in that city council meeting, I had seen that previously you guys had spent a whole week going over it to the council. Is that correct?
Well, that's a question for the council.
We get it about a month or month and a half before it's voted on, so we can, we've had special called work sessions, we haven't had those, there's been longer, sometimes we, we review it on our own and ask questions, but.
Because it's just a little concerning that people have gotten up here and asked questions about where money's going.
Yeah, so I'll tell you.
I don't know, I don't know, when, who else are you supposed to ask?
So on very specific checks that are written, if you look at, Mr. Faruqi does, you could ask him, but there, there are a lot of checks in the check log when we approve those bills. We have actually approved those expenditures previously, we're just approving the checks to be written. So there, there's a lot of very small individual checks that are written to all kind of vendors that I'm just never going to know what every one of those are. I don't know that anyone would say they do, so.
So how involved would you say you are with the budgets for the department?
The budget, we're not involved in creating it, that is the mayor and the, now, when it comes to us to question, do we need to have something spent here rather than there? That is our, our job, to review and to make any changes. And we vote on it, it doesn't get approved till we approve it.
So do you guys provide budget oversight or is that the mayor's responsibility?
We, we, we have the fiduciary responsibility. He's, he's collecting what the departments need and operations need to operate, run the city, and then that's what they present to us, and then we make adjustments.
And then weren't there overages already planned mid-year for?
So typically, we, you know, if revenues exceed, if, revenues, budgeted revenues are lower than actual revenues at mid-year, there is room to make addition. That's actually, to your point, I guess, that's actually where this money came from for the trash cans. I actually asked that last week in the work session, I think you were here. So that came out of the unassigned funds.
And that was from when you guys go, I think it's mid-year, right, where you guys?
So at mid-year, whatever that number is, we might make some mid-year adjustments to the budget, add some capital. If we have to make staffing, you know, we had to staff up or have overtime, we might make those adjustments. And then we kind of always have a running unassigned balance.
Okay, that's on hand for that.
Okay, sorry again, I just didn't see it. All right, let's see. Resolution 24173, authorize the acceptance of funds for the Morgan County State delegation for signage at the train depot and old state bank.
These are funds that came from the Morgan County State delegation, which is Senator O'War's office, to replace these two signs. So we just, one, we need our authorization to accept it, two, then just to adjust our community development budget to expand those funds.
Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
Aye.
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 Resolution 24173 is approved four to zero with one abstention. Yes, sir. Resolution 24174, award bid number 24020 for janitorial services to J&amp;H Janitorial, being the lowest responsible bidder.
Morning, Jeremy Sherrill, procurement. This is the annual renewal, this is an annual contract, one-year contract that can be renewed for up to three years, and we had four bids and we were recommending J&amp;H.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion?
I just, I'm pleased to see, Jeremy, that at least we have multiple bidders and, and that's moving in the right direction. I am concerned, not on your, I mean, anything that you could do, but I'm concerned that the bids were all overboard. I mean, literally from a hundred thousand dollars to 400-plus thousand dollars, so, you know, I, so anyway, I, I will go along with this today. I, I shared with you my concern earlier that, you know, when it's that much lower than the next highest bid, we wonder if they're capable of doing the job. Kyle has shared one of the buffers that we have in this contract that we can end this within a 30-day period, so I will support this today, and I appreciate the effort that you put forth as far as increasing the number of bidders that we have in these contracts.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution 24174 is approved five to zero. Resolution 24175, award bid number 24023 to Hogan's Mechanical Services LLC for LED field lighting installation at Sports Pluts, being the lowest responsible bidder.
Yes, sir, this is install only. We've already acquired the lighting through a national cooperative, and we received four bids and Hogan's Mechanical Services is our recommendation as the lowest responsible.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second. Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call?
Lattner.
Aye.
McMasters.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 24175 is approved four to one. Resolution 24176, approved City of Decatur and Darty LLC agreement for public easement.
Hey, good morning, Council. This is an agreement with Darty LLC for the city to have access to the, the road by the Conne Lodge so that we can build an access road at some point for our future development.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion?
Now, when we discussed this before, this is right off 67, we discussed this before, we're building a road that, this is not like, this is the road that's going into the development, correct?
It's going into the Target area.
Into the Target area?
Yeah, so they can't access.
Okay. We had conversations before when we talked about this development, about roads that were going into it and.
So this particular one that is, I haven't seen a design in a while, goes, it's like a service road that extends Country Club and comes in front, and then we connect to this property where the easement is being granted.
And I was under a different understanding.
It does, it's the frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what's the purpose of this frontage road?
So, sorry, the access at that, to get to, do you know, this property is the empty block right next to Target, or not.
Like where the old school buildings?
Yes, yeah, Board of Education. Yes, yeah, Board of Education. There's not good access to that property, especially when you need a light, left turns out of it, if something were to develop there, you can't really safely have a development and make left turns without having to go all the way through the Target parking lot. So, we don't, in my opinion, know that AlDOT would even allow us to add a light where there's already the, you know, way to turn in there by these hotels. And so, the solution is, there's already a light at Country Club, so just extend the road through the light and make the service road to connect that way. So, it just provides another point of access.
Do we know what's supposed to be developed there?
There's been discussion, but there's nothing concrete on that property.
Okay, but, all right, so we're...
I don't, I don't know that the property has even sold, closed, it's been under contract multiple times, but I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay. And what's the impact of another, because part of the deal, as I understand it, is to allow, there's forty thousand dollars involved in another hotel potentially being built there?
Possibly, no.
Potentially, you guys may want to say that.
Potentially, on the site, behind the Conne Lodge side. The question was if the hotel owner wants to build another one, we could maybe do something instead of just changing money around. Is that everything?
Yeah.
Just waving some fees.
Building permit fee.
Waving some fees.
Okay, but I'm thinking at it from an overall perspective, I don't know what that's zoned as, I don't know what the big Decatur One plan says it's supposed to be there.
I think, yeah, so that would matter, whatever the project is, we're gonna have an industrial site there, you know, but likely residential, I can't remember what the...
Yeah, but also some retail.
A general business district is probably what it would be.
And then, the other question is, because we got a lot of hotels built in the city, and sixty-seven is a pretty good high-speed avenue approach to come into the city to go be part of these big events. More hotels and more competition amongst hotels may not be the best answer for the City of Decatur, I would offer, if we're trying to make that parking garage, that we spent nine million dollars ever get filled, because there's lots of possibly cheaper, likely cheaper places to go than downtown Decatur. So, an overarching plan would be a useful resource.
Yeah, we generally are told by, especially industry folks, and y'all can chime in, and tourism folks, that we are under, we do not have enough hotels, but, so.
Okay.
Dan, let me revisit this, no, Dan, I'm sorry, Mr. Pepper. This is gonna be the equivalent of the access road that we have in front of Red Lobster, Burger King.
Yes.
On the building.
Correct.
See, because we had discussions before on the same property where we were going to actually provide road going in, so this is not the same.
This is the same one.
This is just the access road.
This is the access road. This is...
But not, we're not talking about building streets for some development, because we don't even have a development.
Yeah, we were specific with that, if this Burger King, we said, we cannot build your street, so we don't.
Okay, it's just access.
Because they could have retail in the front as well.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 24-176 approved five to zero. Resolution 24-177, approve charter communication spectrum Sixth Avenue lighting project.
This is for the bearing of the charter lines along Sixth Avenue, or the Sixth Avenue project?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pepper, any discussion?
I'll simply say that I don't have a problem with the underground utilities at all, I just did not support this bond, or this money that was dedicated to this, so I won't support this today.
Hey, Dan, will the wooden poles that currently support these lines come down?
Yes, that's why we're, yes, sir, that's why we're bringing all these resolutions.
Good. Let's safer through there without those posts.
Correct, yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 24-177 is approved four to one. Resolution 24-178, approve acceptance of donation for a handicap swing to be placed at Rhodes Ferry Park.
Good morning, mayor and council. This is something that we've been working with Decatur civitan on. This is for a wheelchair accessible swing that will be put at Rhodes Ferry Park. It won't take the place of anything, this will be a separate swing. But I did want to thank them, and I saw Mr. Higgins, but I don't see a representative from Decatur civitan, but they've been so good about this, and even about the, you know, the delivery and stuff, is they're gonna have somebody go pick it up, and I think, and I may get this part wrong, but I think it's in Indianapolis, or something like that, they're gonna go pick it up for us, bring it to us, have it put in, the whole nine yards, so, so I did really want to notice them and thank them for what they've done with it.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters, any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution 24-178 is approved five to zero. The next council work session will be held August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four at 5:00 PM. Next regular council meeting will be held on September third, twenty-twenty-four at 6:00 PM. Anything you guys need to add, or anything else from the council?
I have something. Herman, we had spoken once before about a, and you helped me with this, but we still got a problem, and I don't have a poll number anymore, but we've got a problem with, we allow charter and AT&amp;T franchise agreement so that they can use our right-of-way, is that not correct?
Yes, sir, they pay us five percent.
And behind, and we've had this, I don't know that I got into specifics with me, you kind of directed me, and I appreciate that, but behind 606 Thirteenth Avenue Northwest in May, the lines, the charter, and, they're not Decatur utility lines, because they're charter and AT&amp;T. The lines were knocked over because of high winds, they're directly behind this gentleman's house, and I've spoken with David Andrews, who's tried to reach out to AT&amp;T and charter, and fortunately, AT&amp;T came in and redid their lines and did what they were supposed to do. Charter has, I don't know if they refused, or if they just, you know, put it to the side, but these lines have been down and laying on the ground, and the ones that are connected, you can literally reach up and touch them with your hands. Something needs to be done, someone needs to contact charter and see if we can, I mean, because they are working on our property, see if we can get some sort of resolution to this, it's just gone on far too long. Jim McCamp always grasps, because he's gonna be cutting over lines, and Mr. Ellison has just asked if I would bring that to the council's attention, and so I wanna do that, and see if we can get some...
Share with me, I remember the incident, share with me the address again.
606 Thirteenth Avenue Northwest. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Just point of information on that, we, Sharon and I ended up going away, we cut the cable and went with T-Mobile home internet service, so it doesn't require a line, and I think Verizon does the same, and it's a very, I'd say, less expensive package and reliable service, just an FYI.
I just wanna say that this is not the line that's going to his house, this is the line that's running from utility pole to utility pole to utility pole, and it's fallen, and it's laying directly behind his house.
Okay.
And so, it's just, it's a dangerous situation, and I don't know that these things carry any kind of voltage or anything, but it's a dangerous situation that needs to be resolved, so that's, that's my only...
I'll take it.
All right, mayor.
Yeah, we received an inquiry from John, I hope I say this right, Plot Company, it's a contractor wanting to store materials at the property that is to be purpose for building the new DYS facility for a period of time, they wanted to rent this month to month. What, what is the plans for the new DYS facility? We, I know we started with eight million, then we went here ten million, now twelve, fifteen, and then twenty, what's...
I don't think we know a number until we go to bid, but I do know that the architect is moving forward on construction plans, aiming at a fifteen-million-dollar building.
Do you know when?
I was told six to eight months.
Before we commit?
Yes, to get construction plans.
Okay. Like I said, gives us an answer, Herman, on how to respond to the contractor.
Now, what are they trying to store there?
You related to the sewer project, the sewer improvements?
It's just a lay-down yard, like the mayor says, for sewer, pipe, month to month.
Okay, thank you, mayor. All right, we will start our public comment now, and first on the list was Mr. Faruqi.
Jacob, I'm gonna ask you to give me a little grace here, because...
I'll do my best, give me some as well.
Mr. Faruqi, not to interrupt you real quick, sorry, I have to go myself, respectfully, I'll go back and look at the public comment at the end of the meeting, I just, I need to leave myself.
Trust me, you are unnecessary in this discussion, okay. Only two of the original six bulletized plans from the chief's May twenty-third plan remain unchanged. And in his plan, and mentioned nineteen times, is the word leadership, and seventeen times is mentioned, or excuse me, is mentioned nineteen times crisis, seventeen times leadership. So, there's a crying for pain here in terms of what is needed for the city, and he's recognized it, it's his leadership. His proposed plan is part of this, page three of his plan, most of that ought to be, ought to have been in effect had we had Mr. McMasters, city council, the mayor, providing some supervision over the chief. Chief said he's gonna review procedures, what is established there?
So, my only comment on this, all of this, is gonna be, I'm, this plan, and I think people probably have different perspectives than me on this, but this is his plan. Do I know how he's gonna accomplish the six things that he is putting forward in his plan? Do I know if he's gonna hire somebody on his own, is it Kalia? I don't know those things, I have not. I'm concerned, my focus has been on the third-party review, I think that will be very fruitful, I hope this plan is fruitful. I do think we will ask, I hope, I mean, I will ask him to give us updates on, in time frames, on when some of these things will be accomplished, but...
And we've had three months to get a timeframe established.
Yeah, I guess my point is, and again, could be very different, this, this is a plan that the chief and the mayor need to come together to execute. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna get in the weeds of the execution of it, except for wanting to see the results. I don't know, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to tell you, and I think I know, you understand what I'm saying, but very specific to how it's gonna get done, they need to work on that together. What I'm concerned about is, what are the results, and that's what I'll be asking about.
Is it acceptable for the mayor to have not reviewed that plan by now?
I feel like if I had not reviewed it, you're, you would have a valid question of asking me, because it's, and this is not a criticism, but it's not very long, it's pretty straightforward, it, you know, it doesn't take a lot of time. So, if you were asking, if I had not reviewed it, is it unacceptable that I had not reviewed it, I would say yes, for myself.
Okay. Page four of said plan. What's the status of the chief's review of other law enforcement professional practices, training, and policy? He has provided no information therefore. And let me just give you a little background. Mr. Pepper asked me a question earlier about, he's not an expert in law enforcement, I'm not either, but I do have a bachelor's degree in administration of justice from the university. I have two master's degrees. I can read this plan, and I think you all can read this plan, and say, it's insufficient, and it's not gonna meet the mail, and it needs additional resources that either are or are not gonna be provided, but the assumption that they are does not equate to a plan.
Yeah, as far as additional resources, you know, that's on us, so if there's additional resources that are needed, they, the chief or mayor or both would need to come to us with that request, and we would consider it. I'm not gonna just give every resort without some, then it's, we gotta understand the cost, why are we doing this, when are we gonna have results, all those, those things, so...
Chief's leadership has demanded that we restructure, in his plan, Sage and a bunch of his other media resources.
I'm not trying to interrupt you, but that is, that is completely separate.
From?
From what I'm, he is not involved with the Red Sage marketing piece.
He suggests it in his plan.
He, he's gonna use those resources, but he wants to, from what I took from it when I read it, is that he wants to improve communication, that is, that is really not part of, they're communicating...
He wants to restructure crisis management.
Um, yes, sure, in the communication of that, which could be building out a department, it could be hiring people.
Okay.
He would have to bring those requests to us.
He requests additional resources for officer wellness. He has failed to provide adequate training, educational, recruiting, and retention standards amongst its force. Page six, we're basically talking about a self-licking ice cream cone in terms of resources. We're whitewashing the main problem, which is his leadership. His leadership has provided us with this, which is not even really worth the time and effort it took me to read it, or the amount of time and effort required for people on this dais and the mayor to read it. So, when are we going to hold him accountable for a plan? Here's the problem, he can't do that. He does not have the skill set to do his job. I talked to Mr. Pepper briefly about that, and he was in concurrence. Not current. Send him to ten weeks of FBI training does not equate to having leadership skills to manage this department. We gotta do something, you all gotta do something. A resolution to that effect would be a hell of a way to start.
I'll say, I'm gonna add just my comments to this. Jacob talked about the need for us to get results from the third-party review, and I agree with that, I agree with that. I am anxiously awaiting, of course, we won't get anything until January, but I'm anxiously awaiting the results of that review, but I don't think...
It could be before then.
It could, but they have up until then.
Yeah.
I don't, and I don't really expect it before then, but you might be...
I hope so.
I hope we aren't, you're right. But I don't think that the chiefs, us dealing with the chief hinges on us getting a report from the third-party review. I think that I've made my position very clear. I like the chief.
Oh, he's a great guy.
I think he's a really nice guy. My concern is the leadership in this department. I've said before, I think we've got some very good officers in our department. I think that some of our officers lack leadership, and I think that if we were in a different environment, that the CEO, which is basically what he is of that department, would have been dismissed. And so, I don't think that we can continue to hold off and say we're waiting for a review, or that we're waiting for, to see actions out of this document, because I don't think that whatever document is produced, we're going, it's going to provide us with the leadership that we need. So, I don't, I've wrestled with this, because I don't think that we should be waiting to make a decision on our chief. Maybe a decision's already been made, maybe our council, I can only speak for me, is comfortable with the fact that he provides the leadership, I'm just not personally. And so, I think that rather, sooner versus later, I'd like to see us come to some sort of resolution as to whether we're gonna keep this chief, or whether we're gonna move into a direction where we let this move in a different direction from this chief.
Thank you. Jacob, you mentioned, we can chew bubble gum and walk at the same time, so maybe this is the timeframe, we start interviewing people to conduct maybe that position in the future, present weight?
Not, we're not, we can't interview if we still have somebody in the position.
Actually, you can. You can request, you don't have to prove it through the city, you as individuals can make a, make a resolution to do that.
To interview people for a position that's already filled?
Request?
I don't, we don't have any plans to do that.
Okay. Probably the most disappointing part of the plan, because we direct a lot of energy towards community relations. The plan subdivises the city into a focused engagement with the silent majority, whoever that is, I don't understand who that silent majority is, in the plan, but he defines it's consisting of businesses, churches, and communities, and then a simple listening to the minority community, which apparently is not a subset of the community. So, two separate verbiage here to describe the silent majority, with assumption on what that is, and the minority population. That seems like we're segregating, basically, how we're gonna conduct law enforcement or policy reviews from the citizens.
All I can tell you is, we should listen to everyone and engage with everyone.
I agree, and if you'd said simply that, I would have had a problem with that.
We did just hit four minutes, if you can wrap up a final point.
I will wrap it up, post takes. I do have a separate, completely separate issue, but I don't think I have the time to deal with that. Thanks.
Thanks. Next, Mike, or, sorry, Alvin, mostly, sorry.
Gentlemen. So, I had the pleasure of sitting in this very room on Thursday and Friday of this past week.
Just, no, just, if it's gonna get into specifics...
No, I'm not getting into specifics.
I know, just before we got into what we got in before.
And I'd also like to apologize on behalf of our mayor to Mr. Marks, the way that he yelled at you, and I understand you've been the city attorney for forty-four years, we got a man here who doesn't even do his job, trying to tell you how to do yours, anyways. I sat in this very room, and I heard things on both Thursday and Friday that were disturbing to me, about, they came from our HR director of the city, as well as our mayor, about leadership, and that it was the same across all departments within the city. So, it seems that the fire department, that those guys are held to a different standard.
I appreciate you being supportive, but...
We just gotta be, can you get into the specifics of what was discussed?
No, no, this specifics wasn't discussed, I didn't speak on anything specific, I just said, if, if, if it's fair all across the board, right, and the same systems are in place for the Decatur Police Department as for the fire department.
And this question can be asked regardless if there's a hearing or not, I'll say yes.
Yeah, so, what I'm saying is, they were very adamant about the idea of leadership and what that is and what it looks like, and he's a very poor representation of that. And then, our police, I go to court on August the twenty-seventh for a charge that I have for obstructing a governmental operation. I was basically abused, you know, and humiliated in front of the city on third Friday. Joe Renshaw was allowed to retire, and I still have to go to court with this pending charge on the twenty-seventh. I just wanted to express my concerns, in that, sitting in those hearings makes, it makes the city look really bad. Two people make the city look really bad, Rochelle Sand and Tabbo.
Mr. Gaylord?
How's everybody doing today?
Good.
All right. After hearing everything, the best plan and best solution for Decatur, and for Decatur to move forward, in my mind, and I'm pretty sure this is in other people's minds as well, firing everybody in the police department. Rehire capable people to do the job. Get rid of that cancer right there. Find somebody that can do the job. It's all stemming down to removing people and replacing them with the proper people to get the job done. That's, there ain't, there ain't a plan that can beat that plan, because the plan that the chief has been holding out for, for months and months and months, and whatever, 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 just, he's running around the circle, and he's gonna keep everybody, that's the problem. So, that plan will not work if everybody that is the problem in Decatur is supposed to be enforcing this new plan by somebody that's the problem. That's just, that's crazy to me. So, I would suggest firing a whole lot of them and start fresh. I mean, companies have done that before, right? I'm pretty sure there's, we can find companies that have terminated every problem there that can be, and rehire people that have the skills, have the ability to do the job necessary on a day-to-day basis. So, yeah.
Excellent. Mr. Gaylord.
Hey, I got a little brain fart. I guess I'm addressed the other day, I wasn't specifically talking to you, I had nobody, we just kept speaking to you.
I understand.
I guess I was gonna, I guess make a comparison, I guess, to, you know what I mean? Everybody knows right, everybody knows right from wrong, right, you know what I mean? And I guess, I guess not to get in any specifics, you know what I mean? But we all know, you know, everyone should be treated fairly, so, but it's obvious, and I know y'all know it's obvious, man. If we're, if, if I'm walking down the street, Jacob, you know what I mean, and I'm walking beside you, but we both trip and fall, right? But when I trip and fall, I get in trouble for tripping and falling. You don't, you know what I mean? But it's obvious, you know what I mean, it's obvious to, I guess, the difference, should I say, in someone getting in trouble opposed to someone else getting in trouble. And I've been seeing on the news and some people getting arrested, there was a guy got caught with like a hundred guns, and had an eleven thousand dollar bill. A guy previously about a month and a half ago, African American, supposedly, so happened. Got a quarter million dollar bond. I mean, I don't know what goes into those actions, I don't know if I can ask him or something, but that seems to be a continuous thing happening in the city, occurring to somebody, you know what I mean? Like, if the rules, you know what I mean, if every, if everybody, if it's gonna be equal, it should be equal all the way across the board, you know what I mean? Like, it shouldn't be that one person does something and, you know what I mean, gets in trouble then opposed to this other person. That's a different race, you know what I mean, gets in trouble, and then they're more, it's more lenient than the other person, but they're committed the same infraction. Sometimes not even the same infraction. It could be something way lesser than the next person, you know what I mean? But it's obvious, everybody sees it, so I'm not trying to understand it. And also with the chief, mind you, to me, you know what I mean, as a person, you know what I mean, for us, what I see, but as a leader, you know what I mean, but that thing that he put out there in place should already be followed, Jacob. His policies that should already be followed, it's the, it's the, it's the, I guess, holding them accountable, the officers accountable is the problem. You kinda see what I'm saying? You know what I mean, you should be able, you should get in trouble for not following policies and procedures, see what I'm saying? But the same, that's all I see this inside of that, the thing that he made up, you know what I mean, just the same things that are already supposed to be following anyway. So, like, I'm guessing, I guess the question I'm asking, if you see wrong, then why can't we correct the wrong? Or you just, or you guys are scared to say something?
Wrong should be corrected. You mentioned several things on bonds, you know, we don't, there was actually an article in the Decatur Daily within the last month, I think, that the judges talked about how those happen. I think there's a lot of work that probably could be done there, but it would be outside of us. But, I mean, I agree that there's no, when things are clearly right or wrong, they should be treated equally, and if they're not, we need to correct those things.
Just like, just like, I don't, you know what I mean, I have respect for all women, and either person anyway, but how Hunter Pepper was speaking to Michigan truly, you know what I mean, I almost got like, come on, bro, you can't, you can't handle it, you know what I'm saying? And I guess, before I, when I finish up, the lawyer, I said, the lawyer, is it obstruction a secondary crime?
I'm sorry, I can't understand.
Are you talking about obstruction of governmental operations?
Yes, sir.
Obstruction of governmental operations is what he's asking about.
Is that a second...
Yeah, I've answered that before, it's...
I'm asking you now, sir.
I stand, the same answer's gonna be, it is a primary, you can have obstruction of governmental operations, and that's a charge by itself.
And it has to be physical, correct?
It does not have to be physical.
It doesn't?
It does not.
Yeah, that's, that's not, that's not true. But I was just saying that, I was just saying that to say this, like, you know what I mean, if you can see that people are getting arrested, you know what I mean, for like absolutely nothing and not committing a crime, you can see the video, you know what I mean, that the person is not committing the crime that they say that they committed, and we all watch it on video, y'all guys can't say nothing? You can't do anything?
I'll, obstruction of governmental operations seems to me, in general, not speaking of what Alvin discussed, but in general seems to be a charge that needs stricter parameters, because it seems like you can give it to anybody at any time, so...
Yeah, it's a, we call, well, the people...
I don't know the word.
Well, the people that, the people that I do my studies, we call that a bait crime for the disorder contract, essentially, it's a bait, it's a bait crime. You know what I mean, but that's, that's pretty much all I had to say, man, it's just, it's just obvious, man, it's really embarrassing to be a part of the city, but, you know what I mean, I think we're gonna stick this out until we get some change done.
Thanks, Mr. Eccles.
You're the police department liaison, correct?
Yes.
So, why did you not have the figures for the police department?
Why did I not have the budgetary figures? Again, because it's, it was somewhere between sixteen and eighteen million dollars. Why did I not have the specific what each check was done for?
Yeah, I mean, if you're the liaison for the police department, our financial liaison, wouldn't you have a breakdown of their finances?
We all have a breakdown of the budget, every single one of us do.
So, you want me to call Mr. Faruqi up here and ask you that question again about specific expenditures?
Just because we've seen it, you know, we looked at it this time last...
You said you have it.
It's in the budget. It's all in the budget. Every bit of that's in the budget.
So, you have it with you right now?
No, I don't have a copy of the budget with me right now. I do not.
Mr. Ladner, I mentioned Washington City Council meeting, and I've noticed how since September 29th, they've changed drastically. Have you noticed that as well?
Yes.
Why?
I guess I need to know what you're speaking about, but...
Why, why have you made the changes that you have, and all the changes, because I could make a whole list?
Sure, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. The only real change was we, and actually, we, and I've said this, about the sharing of time was not allowed prior to September 29th. People tried to do that, and I didn't let them, I did start doing that, and we've gone back to how it was prior. I don't know specifically what you're talking about, but...
Everything between the professionalism, the, the lackadaisicalness, the open conversations, the sign-in sheet being up here, I told you, I can go into a whole list.
Sign-up sheets always been out there.
So, you're calling me a liar when I pull a video proof right now?
We had it at the front over, I mean, maybe if somebody...
I'll pull it up right now.
You can show it to me later, but maybe somebody walked in late and...
Don't say it's a fact that I'm lying, when I'm not lying. I just told you I watched that meeting.
Okay.
Did I not?
And, and it has happened...
And you're calling me a liar.
I'm not. It's happened since September 29th, when people maybe got here a little...
I said before September 29th.
Right, and I think what you're referencing is, the sign-up sheet is outside.
Nope. It is currently outside, but I'm telling you, it is on YouTube, the sign-in sheet being here.
And what I would tell you is, you could also find on YouTube, since September 29th, actually, people that are sitting in here right now may have gotten here a few minutes late, it was sitting on that table, and they signed in there too, so...
I'm talking before September 29th.
Right, and I'm telling you, the same exact things occurred both times, where someone had walked forward and signed in with the paper right there, because it was after...
At the conclusion of a meeting.
At the beginning of the meeting.
I'm telling you, it happened at the conclusion of meetings.
I don't know about, I'm not sure what you're...
I'm telling you that this has happened, and I'm asking you why...
You can send me that, I'll look, I'm not sure what you're...
It's the last city council morning, meeting before he got shot. That specific meeting, go back and watch it.
I will, I'm not sure at all what you're referencing. Every meeting I've ever sat here for the last nearly four years, the sign-up sheet's been out there.
But that's a lie. I told you, I can show you a video.
I will check that, I said, as far as that...
But instead of sitting there definitively saying that that is how it was, when I'm telling you I got video and I could show you as soon as the meeting's over, what are you, so, I want you now, since you've publicly came out and called me a liar by saying what I'm saying is not accurate, right?
I'm telling you, I do not recall that.
I'll take that instead of saying definitively, that it has never been that way, because...
As far as I know, it has not.
So, will you publicly come out next city council meeting and apologize for sitting there characterizing this the way that you just did?
I've done it before, yeah. I've been wrong before, and I apologize sitting right here, and I'll do it again if I'm wrong.
Okay, there was something else I wanted to bring up as well, real quick. The, the mayor has made a statement about leadership, and one of the things that he looks for in a leader is being there where people don't have to look elsewhere for leadership. That almost seems like he's not fitting his own definition of leadership. And then, my last question is, is public comment part of councilmen's obligations to attend?
That's actually a question as far as attendance, Herman, if someone gets up in...
You don't like the layers' attendance?
No, a council member. So, Mr. Jackson says it's not.
So, you guys don't even have to sit here for public comment?
Well, we would have to formally end the meeting, I would think, if we didn't have a quorum. So, if three, two people got up right now, the meeting would no longer be going.
Yeah, the other thing about the city council meetings was, I noticed that you did public comment before, and then you asked the directors, the council, and the mayor if they had anything. It's like I said, your format.
Sometimes, yes, that's true. There were times it was after.
Let me know when you wanna see that video.
I will, but I think, one thing I will say is, and it's, I'll take the ownership...
I mean, moreover, time is all right.
We can talk about it later, if you don't want me to, no.
Well, no, go ahead, say what you...
I'll take ownership of that, but I do think the last, you know, since September 29th, you said, has made it clear that we, and it's, again, it's on me, there should be clearer structure than there was, so, yeah, that's all I'll say.
I feel it's trickled down.
Okay, anything else from the council? Real quick.
I just wanna acknowledge this on record. So, Friday night, I got a call around 10 o'clock, and I came up here to, to the jail, and they had arrested one of Steve Perkins' supporters. They're still targeting these people or us, and they come up with this fake warrant situation, and then somehow people have warrants, and then somehow they don't have them when it's time to get out of jail, but they held him all weekend, it wasn't Friday night, it was Saturday night, I'm sorry. But yeah, I just wanted to say that on record, that they're still actively doing this to Steve Perkins' supporters.
Thanks, Alvin. Anything else from the council? All right, we will stand adjourned. Thanks.